Hello? Hello? On my call to meeting, the order, can everybody take a seat, please? Okay. I'm going to read this in, and first I'm going to tell everybody, we've closed the public hearing. We couldn't reopen it again because it would have to be posted. So, we're not taking any questions from the audience or the applicant. We are going to discuss up here and then take the vote. We have other business after...
Hold on, board. Was it notice supposed to be given on the change of date for the meeting tonight?
Say that again.
Was it notice supposed to be given to the board for the meeting? Would it be scheduled for the 22nd, move to tonight?
It's not scheduled for tonight.
No.
No, we posted it.
It was posted, and then it was continued from two weeks ago.
Yeah, it was continued from two weeks ago, and then it was...
Is it stated by the date of 22nd?
No. There's always the 8th.
No, we moved it to September 8th.
No, it was stated the 22nd. 22nd?
No.
I'd like to check your notes, check in mine.
The other application that night, 66 Broadway, was continued to the 22nd, as was the Copley Middle School.
Right, 66 Broadway, no name, was pushed to the 22nd, and the Copley Middle School was pushed to the 22nd. This one was continued till the 8th. Okay, I'm going to read in, but I can't take anything from the audience or the applicant. And when you're...if you want to stay afterwards, because we have more business, if everybody would file out quietly, that would be great, so we can all get done with our business. Thank you. Good evening, I'm Debbie Homewood. I am the Chair of the Planning Board. A quorum is present, the meeting is therefore called to order. Tonight's proceeding will go as follows, we don't have any hearings to open. I don't have to remind everybody, could you turn off your cellphones, please? And, we're going to go right to the agenda. I'm going to keep this here going. Okay. First meeting on our agenda is 55 Lennox Street, special permit under 9.5.6. B. Discussion from the Board, why don't we go down the road? Ernie, do you want to start?
I'll sentence Madam Chairman.
You ready to vote?
I am.
No discussion?
Not on my part.
Okay, Joe? Do you have any discussion you want to talk about?
Yes, I did, I just wanted to say...
Wait a minute, let me give you this.
I just wanted to say that there are two issues that stand off me. One is the size of the project, and the lack of parking with respect to the size of the project. At one session of the public hearing, someone questioned the size of the building, and asked if it could be reduced. We were told that the size of the building was necessary to make the project feasible. I understand that to mean that the smaller building, a smaller building, would not be economically feasible. I don't know if that's true, but I do know that the Planning Board is not responsible for guaranteeing profits and success for developers. That is not part of the Planning Board's mission statement. When it comes to the parking, the issue of whether there was sufficient parking was questioned from the start. Zoning requires 1.1 parking spaces per unit. Before the Planning Board sent this zoning provision to town meeting, some wanted fewer parking spaces per unit. I supported the provision requiring 1.1 parking spaces when the Planning Board sent it to town meeting, and that's what it eventually became. There's a question, can the Planning Board waive the requirement? And the answer is yes. I know there was discussion on that, we do have the ability to waive the requirement. And the question is, should the Planning Board waive this requirement here, in this situation? And my opinion is no. This waiver would request as too much as would reduce that number of required spaces by 38 or 39, depending on whether we're rounding up or down. Off-site parking can be troublesome. 15 spaces at the Lester Cleaners may not offer much of a solution. One question, is it too far from Lennox Street to be feasible? Would it be reasonable? Perhaps for some, I don't know. But, they're asked, it's a big ask to ask us to waive so many spaces in this situation. I don't think projects should be approved if developers can't take care of their parking needs and requirements within the proposed development project. Let's not drop parking issues on town streets or town lots. I think that housing may be feasible at this site, but not with the proposed size and insufficient parking presented to us here. Thank you.
Guys, no applause, no applause, please.
So, everybody is well aware of what the ask is here. The primary issue is this waiver on parking. I'll be very honest, I liked this project at the beginning, I think it's an attractive project, I think the site is begging for redevelopment. It's a location in downtown, on the tracks essentially, there's something of that scope belongs there and will wind up there. I initially wasn't that concerned...the parking is something I've had to think about. I spent a lot of time walking that neighborhood, so for those of you who say, have you ever been down there? Walked all around, and I've asked and done some anecdotal research and some empirical research, and I've come to the conclusion that as much as the future may involve less cars and younger people and e-bikes and such, that we're not Brookline, we're not Somerville, we're still Norwood, we're still suburban town. And that the ratio of parking, which, by the way, granting a waiver is without doubt within our discretion as a board, that shouldn't be questioned. But, we...the ask that's in front of us, I've come to the conclusion, is too substantial. That, not to say that if a waiver were requested, something less than 1:1 per unit, then maybe another situation would be appropriate here. But, as for this particular ratio that's being presented, I do have some questions, and I just want to make that clear.
Thanks, Brian.
Guys, no applause, please, thank you. We see the signs.
Originally, I was excited to see a good-looking building go down in that area. I kept my mind open about the parking, hoping that we could work out something with either more affordable units or floor plan. But unfortunately, the ask for parking is too much for me. Short and sweet.
Okay, thank you. We can go right to a vote, I'd just like to say a few things that I think the Board has expressed over and over. This was not an easy decision. We liked the project, we don't like the parking. I do appreciate the public...
I'd like to withdraw my application, please.
Do I have to make a motion for that? No, he can just withdraw.
Should I identify...
Okay.
Is this procedural nature only?
Processually, you can accept a request.
Okay. The applicant has requested a withdrawal of the application, so we don't need to go to a vote?
Correct.
You have to vote.
Okay. We have to vote on his decision to withdraw, without prejudice?
Correct, without prejudice, I can take a motion.
Somebody make a motion? You making it?
I'll make a motion to accept his withdrawal.
Second.
Okay. A motion has been made to accept the applicant's withdrawal.
Brian seconded it.
And we are going to vote on the applicant's withdrawing his application without prejudice.
It doesn't need to be...
All right, we're all here. Ernie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
And the Chair says yes, the application is withdrawn without prejudice. Thank you. If you're staying, we'll have you, if you're not, please be as quiet as possible. Thank you. A second on the agenda is...is a comprehensive plan lady here? Counselor? Do you have other interesting things, people? Okay, I want to make a...I would love to give a report on the Community Preservation Act. Guys, on your way out, Kim, would you shut the doors, please? Thank you. As you know, we are deep in the heart of it, we have a lot of really great projects going. We've got a pie chart for you from Kristen here. I didn't make copies because you know how I hate to kill trees. And we've also, so you can see how much we spend, how many applications are ongoing, what projects are completed, and we have three sessions coming in September to get people more involved in the Community Preservation Act. So if you guys want to peruse those, I won't belabor it. And, we've got September 16th at the library at 6 o'clock, November 22nd at 1 o'clock at the Senior Center, and Thursday, December 25th at the Civic Center. So we can tell everybody what their community preservation funds are going to. And I believe there's a thing looping on it, so people don't have to...okay. Okay, any questions from the Board? Yes?
Just, I saw your NCM program, I thought it was very good. You gave the rundown there, pretty much.
Okay, I haven't seen it, I can't look it up.
No, it was good, you did a good job, and I think you were...so I mean, I think it basically, you categorized, you know, the highs and lows of...
What the CPC wants to do is get more people...I remember eight years ago when we started this, there was a lot of, oh, the Civic's going to get everything, and the money's going to go through the town hall. People can make applications if they qualify for CPA money. So, we're trying to get more people involved in the Community Preservation Act, it's their money, top right of your tax bill, so you can see how much you're spending. That's it for my spiel.
Debbie, do you want to touch on dates for pre-applications?
Yeah, but I need the sheet back, because I can't do anything by memory.
Just to make sure people know about that.
That is also information we're going to give out at the sessions. CPC project dates, where are they? Pre-applications are due by October 1st, so you need to come to our sessions if you have any interest in applying for Community Preservation Act money. And notice of eligibility will be provided by October 10th. Full applications are due on November 14th. This Community Preservation Commission helps people through that process, and that's why we're having this breakout session, because it's a little complicated, but we want to get you involved, and we got lots of money. How much money do we have left? Total Community Preservation Projects, 1,488,000, and we have a total in our kitty of So, that should excite everybody, I think. Okay, no questions from my Board? We're good?
Sounds good.
Okay. The Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee update liaison is this lovely young lady here, I believe. I know, they all left us, we're so excited to have them proud.
Good timing, I kind of just saw the others leaving. Yeah, so I'm here tonight, thank you, good to see you all again, because we are now at the end of Phase 2 of Comprehensive Plan, and so I just wanted to update the Board and give a little review of what we're up to in Phase 3. All right, so we'll just cruise on to the next slide, which is pretty much what I just said. I won't read every single word that's on these slides, but I just want you to know that the vision and the core themes and the goals are, the drafts are up on the website, project website, so you can check it out there, tinyurl.com/norwoodcp. All right, next slide. So, here we are, we are just at the beginning of Phase 3. We have a draft set of strategies that we're going to start vetting, but I'll get into getting ahead of myself. So, next slide. In Phase...this is for Phase 2, we engaged just over 1,500, almost 1,600 people, and if we go to the next slide, and we include Phase 1 as well, some of you all went to that community open house back in December. We are at about half, a little over half, of our overall engagement goal that we have, so we want to engage more people. But we are on track, given that we are kind of at the end of halfway through, and now we're into Phase 3, so we're going to keep getting the word out. But, we're pretty happy with the response we've had so far from a lot of people.
One question, 52.5% of goal. Are you taking the general...where is that number, 52%? General population, over 18?
Excellent question. So, back at the beginning of the process, we asked the Comprehensive Plans Steering Committee, what do you want the goal to be for the engagement? And they settled on, they wanted about 10% of the overall population of Norwood. So we picked the 2020 census, and we took that number, and now I'm getting...well, it'll be about twice that, it'll be about, you know, yeah, right there. 3,134 total participation points is the number we're shooting for by the end of this whole process. Now, we can't track, people may be doing more than one thing, so we track, we call them participation points, more than individual, they're like engagement points, right? Because someone may do more than one thing. But, we are tracking where we can, we do track demographics as well, because we want to kind of get a sense of, are we hearing from a representative sample of the population? Are there certain groups we're not hearing enough from? Do we need to make more targeted outreach to some of those groups? So we did try to do that throughout Phase 2, we still have a little more work to do. So we do want to try to hear a little bit more from, let's say, renters, people who don't speak English very well, there's certain populations that we haven't heard a lot from yet, but we did hear, I'm happy to say, had a huge turnout from the youth. So we did have a really good, there's a lot of outreach to the schools, so we did hear from a lot of young folks, which I think is especially important in a comprehensive plan, because they're the ones who are, you know, going to be living here hopefully, and coming back here when they're grown up.
What do you consider a youth? Under 18, over 18?
Under 18, yeah, we've engaged middle school and high school students.
Okay. Mr. Pacheco?
Just a quick question on engaging, you know, reaching out. Now, you may have done this, and I apologize if you have, because I don't pay the bills of my house, my wife does, so I don't see the electric bill. I'm glad I don't. But, have you thought about putting in the light, in the electric bill, a one-page summary of what the comprehensive plan is, what the master plan is, what its goals are, and like dates of when, or how they can get involved? Is that...
So we did brainstorm a list of different community engagement ideas, I want to say that, so that did, that idea came up, not so much a whole one pager, but I think it was more of printing a line of some sort of text on the bill itself, maybe it was, I forget if it was electric or a water bill, but that idea, utility bill.
Yeah, I mean, that is okay, but I mean, I think that if you stuff, if you stuff the electric bills, like a lot of people do here, I mean, then they get it, and it's a one-page, you know, master plan. What is it? How do you get involved? What's the, what are we trying to accomplish? Dates of community involvement? How do I get involved? Websites? All that kind of stuff, you would reach a ton of people. It's, you know, instead of a one-line thing that, you know, next to the, you know, additional fee for, you know, water storage or something, you know, you'd have a one-page thing.
Yeah, I'll follow up with Sarah on that, to see if there's a way we can do that in the space.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things, I'm like, Ernie, I opened my electric bill, and I think people still read those. And one of the things that we, I don't know if it's on here or not, we talked about, we bought the Community Preservation Commission in order to, because we're kind of doing the same thing you did, we're just outreaching in a different way. We bought the middle part of the Norwood record, it's $300, it reaches 5,500 people.
200.
200, why don't I, I'm stuck on 300. $200, it reaches 5,500...
That was my commission, the 100.
It reaches 5,500 people, you give them the text, and they stuff it. And, for those of us that aren't techie, and there's still those of us that aren't techie, I know that makes you youngins crazy, but we're not, we like a piece of paper. So, it's just an idea.
Yeah, that's a great one, thank you. Any other engagement thoughts, or, okay. So I'll just hit on some of the highlights, what we've heard, and how that got then translated into our draft vision, core themes, and goals. One of the key trade-offs that we're seeing is this tension that we, I'll be honest, this is something I've seen in different flavors in every single community I've worked with that's doing a comprehensive plan. It's how do you balance keeping, preserving who you are, what you love about who you are, and also trying to plan for growth in a thoughtful and inclusive and environmentally sustainable way, this tension between change and preservation. And, how you balance that is going to look different in every single community, but I wanted to highlight that as a theme that's coming out of this process so far. Some other highlights through the engagement, if you'll scroll down, Sarah, are, you know, concerns around housing affordability, that's very top of mind, it becoming more increasingly affordable, both renters and buyers, obviously, that's a wider issue than just in Norwood, but it's felt here, too. Tensions between those who want more diverse housing options, especially near transit and downtown, and those who are opposed to increased density, or fearing overdevelopment. The next slide, in under green space and environment, participants of all ages want to see more green space, better trail connectivity, you know, just support for the open space that you have, and preserving the natural areas that you have, and increasing those areas. So if we scroll to the next slide, wanting improvements as much as you can, of course, the limited ability we have sometimes around regional traffic issues, but alleviating some of the traffic congestion, unsafe intersections, poor cyber conditions, and calling for different ways to do that, especially across Route 1, I suppose, say, across Route 1. That's a tricky one, of course, too, because it is a state-owned road, but that is definitely a physical barrier for people trying to walk and bike. Very, a lot of interest in the downtown, of course, wanting that to continue to be walkable, mixed use, having, supporting small businesses there, and also redeveloping any vacant buildings that are there, and enhancing and maintaining the aesthetics. And then, more calls for, you know, this I think is our youth engagement shining here here, but calls for more youth recreation, teen programming, and having safe, inclusive spaces for non-sports activities. Seniors in particular, also, we're looking for some better facilities and services, housing options, safe walkability. And, as I mentioned, some of the voices we want to hear from more are renters, newer residents, and non-English speakers, where some underrepresented groups from Faces 1 and 2. So, our division so far, this is, there's one overarching community vision statement. And, we gathered ideas not just from engagement results, but from the analysis of where you are now and your existing conditions, kind of the quantitative data side, we looked at qualitative data side for your engagement results, we looked into all your other existing planning documents, because you have a really good foundation to build off of and connect the dots here in this document, of course, planning best practices, and where we can think of other successful initiatives in similar places, we put those together. And this translates both into the overarching vision statement, the core themes, we call them, which are pieces of that overarching vision statement, and the goals, and strategy ideas. So this all kind of translates down. And we do try to track where we're getting ideas from, because we're getting ideas from multiple different sources, we know that that's usually a strong idea. All right, so, how does it all connect? The vision and goal statements, which is the phase that we've just concluded, are describing what people want. We aren't quite to the point of how we're going to get there yet, that's the phase we're in now. We're really trying to think of, brainstorm some strong ideas of strategies, that how can we move, earn more progress in the direction of those goals. Just a reminder, though, that, you know, until this thing is adopted, everything's still considered draft. So, it's going to be iterative. You know, we are in a strategy brainstorm phase now, when we get to the end of that process, we'll probably have to revisit and make sure, does it all, is it all consistent? Does it all make sense? Do we have, you know, do goals need to be consolidated? Do we need another one, that kind of thing? So there is a little bit of this that's going to happen, and to be expected. All right, so, the overall vision statement has a, is a long document, it's longish, and that's deliberate, because we want it to really feel like this is from Norwood. We don't want this to be just a generic vision statement that could be for any community. So it starts with a preamble here, "In 2035, Norwood continues to be the front lading town everyone returns to, a place that balances tradition and innovation. Long-term residents contribute deep knowledge and civic spirit, while new residents enrich the community with cultural diversity and creativity." Then, we have six core theme statements, so this, those are different aspects of, different topics of a comprehensive plan, which are themed together, because we'd like to think of things through systems thinking. And then it kind of concludes here, "Moving forward, the town will balance tradition and innovation to create a more vibrant and welcoming community." So, those six core themes are, if we go to the next slide, and we keep going. One is welcoming neighborhoods and housing choices. So if we, we'll just keep scrolling down, I think. The key points here are looking to create a range of housing options for all income levels and stages of life, prioritizing housing growth near shops, parks, and transit, and fostering integrated planning and collaboration. So, above that's both internal collaboration and also external partnerships with community groups, private sector, and nonprofits. All right, and then the second core theme is around a connected town with safe and reliable transportation, so making sure you can get where you need to go, or in a safe way. Yep, keep going. So the three goals here are making streets safe and welcoming for all users, that has to do with safety and comfort and accessibility. Another goal is connecting neighborhood parks, neighborhoods, parks, and key destinations with sidewalks, trails, and bike networks. And the third one is to expand transit and local travel options for all residents. So we have one that's about all modes and abilities, kind of getting where you need to go safely, another that's about making connections specifically and prioritizing walking and biking, and the last one's around local travel and transit. All right, and the third...
Can I throw in a question?
Yes.
Because, transportation, you're including trains, automobile, trains...
Buses.
Buses, that's a, that's a state issue, we can't really do anything about that.
Right, which is why it's a sort of advocate. So the focus here is, well, yes and no. So if you're talking commuter rail and the local 34E bus, it's more of an advocate position, because there's, your powers are somewhat limited. If we're talking about more of a local thing, like let's say, an example of here at the Senior Center, and the local sort of shuttles that they do around town here, making that more available, or expanding that service in some way for wider hours, or having a more on-demand service, there's different cities and towns who work with other types of organizations, or regional transit organizations, to expand kind of more transit service on a very local level for the residents, to help supplement first, sort of so-called first mile, last mile connections from the train station, or for special populations like seniors. So I think there are things you can do on a local level as well, beyond just kind of advocating with the state for better service.
Okay.
A lot of the, if I can, Matt, Laura, a lot of the, you'll see here in the goals, a lot of it's about connectivity, too, right? So, making sure that the streets on the way to the train, or on the way to the bus stop, are safe and welcoming, that they're shaded, that they've got places to sit, right? That there's, you know, options for being able to access trails, or, you know, how to get within town, like that's all within our control, too, even though it's not a regional transit. Like that's all within our control too, even though it's not a regional transit option. You know, there's, there's ways that we can improve how you get around town.
Okay.
That would follow in this goal too.
Thank you.
So the third core theme is the economic development theme. The goals in here, I'll just go to the next slide and touch on the goals, are revitalizing downtown, Southmore Road, Van Broeck Park and commercial areas, supporting small businesses and local entrepreneurship. And then on the next slide, modernizing, resoning and land use to enable flexible mix of businesses and gathering spaces. And building the long-term economic vision that includes major employers, job training and community hubs. All right, so the next core theme, four out of six here, this one's focused on culture, history and identity. A lot about events and arts. So the first one's related to historic preservation, restoring and reusing historic places in ways that meet modern needs while respecting their character. The second one is about art, the arts, celebrating North's identity in art and education, things like public art, things like school partnerships. The third is to have it, establish a robust calendar of year-round facilities that bring residents together and reflect its cultural variety. So you already do have a strong program of events, but it's, it's just building off of that foundation as well. So the, the fifth core theme is related to open space and natural resources and climate So protecting North's natural resources, expanding and connecting parks, trails, waterfronts and public spaces, and then enhancing the ones you have. So you mentioned the, you know, the Community Preservation Act is a great resource for, for doing things like that. All right, so we'll do the next, this goes on a bit here. So we, this is more related to hazard mitigation and climate change, continuing to, you know, invest in energy-efficient, low-carbon and zero-waste systems to improve your daily operations and costs. I would say that, you know, that kicks in at the end of the useful life of something. Upgrading your critical facilities, utilities, community systems withstand climate hazards. And promoting environmental stewardship through education partnerships and public engagement. So, all right. And the last, but not least, fostering civic engagement and investing in municipal infrastructure and services. So here, if we scroll to the next page, goals are delivering high-quality coordinated services to all residents, having residents feel empowered to be active participants in local government. The next slide here, investing in public infrastructure that supports neighborhood life, and upgrading, adapting town facilities. All right, so we take all this as our, our base, our starting point. And I'll pause here, because we actually do have an engagement opportunity happening this live right now on the website, which is, we have all these goals here and these core themes that people can check out. But there's a goal prioritization survey open right now that we'll keep open as long as we can throughout Phase Three. And people can kind of tell us what they think of these goals and which ones are most important to them. Because while we are hoping you will be able to make progress on all of them, it's a wide-ranging and ten-year plan, and it's also good to know what is most important for people when you have to make some tough decisions. So-
And how would they find that site?
They would find that right on the website at tinyurl.com/norwoodcp, but there's a link to it right off of the Planning Board website.
And the town's website. If you just go to norwoodma.gov, on the left-hand side, it says comprehensive plan. That'll take you to where you need to go as well.
And so we've already been tabling out at Norwood, Norwood Day happened this weekend, and that, that just launched on Friday, so that's hot for the press.
Not to, you know, not for nothing here, but how, how do people know? I'm, I'm going to ask the people in the audience, how many people in this room knew that this was going on?
Well, it only just launched, so we haven't had a really a chance to market it yet. So I'm using this as an opportunity to start the marketing process.
How do we, how does, I mean, I never heard of it.
No, no, no. You're, you're-
Tonight, tonight is the launch.
Tonight's the launch, but how do people know that, hey, you know, I mean, is it on NCM? Is it on the reel on NCM?
It will be. It certainly will be. Yes.
Because I guess right now, I bet you there aren't a person in town knows it's there.
No, well, they wouldn't, because unless they went to Norwood Day, like we haven't actually gotten the word out yet, because it only just opened. So you're hearing it first here, here folks.
Well, you heard it here for us, right?
You heard it here first, but yes, we will be advertising it widely and hope you will also help get the word out.
Who is monitoring the website?
Um, we are. The project website, yeah.
Okay. You're monitoring it regularly?
Yes, yeah, weekly, at least weekly.
I, I asked that, because I asked this question in Town Hall. I won't go into the weeds with it, but I said, well, you know, they can contact this particular place. Again, I won't go into the weeds. So I say, who's monitoring that? After a lot of questions, nobody. So it just goes into this black hole. So you're monitoring it? Okay, good, that's my answer to my question.
All right, so Phase Three. So we've taken these goals, and now we've bring, put our heads together and not just our heads, but all of the prior, you know, sources that I mentioned. We have a hundred and eighty strategies to try to vet in this phase. There probably are going to be some more ideas get thrown into the mix here, but what we're hoping to do is eventually get, consolidate them, get them to be just the strong, or the strongest strategy survive this process. We're collecting them again from the, all these sources. So this isn't necessarily, you know, I sit back in my armchair and try to think of good ideas. It's, we're digging into your own ideas that you have told us from engagement, from your existing conditions, from planning documents, as well as, you know, where we try to learn some of our expertise on, hey, you know, we know this is a successful initiative over here, maybe that would work in Norwood. So we've got some preliminary ideas, and we're going to vet them throughout this phase. So if we go to the next slide.
Can I, can I interrupt you briefly?
Please, yes.
I'm so sorry. Just to like, bring us back a step, when Laura says ideas and strategies, we're talking about actual action items, right? So these goals that you just heard are kind of, these bigger goals-
Still high level.
Still higher level. The ideas, these strategies are like the implementation items. What's the project or the task or the thing it is we're going to do that's going to achieve-
Because right now it's pretty nebulous.
Right, we're starting to go from like-
Right now it's all-
Now we're getting finer.
I mean, to be honest with you, yeah, right now, it's all, I'm the old man here. It's twenty-first century, cut and paste. You know, we all want diversity, we all want nice housing, we all want affordable housing, we all want all these wonderful pie-in-the-sky things.
But this is where-
We're going to have recommendations, we're going to have actual, you know, what's the future of the airport?
We're getting to the phase where the rubber hits the road.
What's the future of the education?
Right, and what are we going to do about it?
Which I haven't heard anything about education yet either, other than engagement. You know, that's another big word right now, engagement. But, you know, do we want to stay with neighborhood schools? Or is, are we going to make a recommendation to consolidate? Things like that. That's, that's, I'm hoping that's what's here.
Well, that's, you know, like I said about the iterative process, I've had communities include specific goals related to schools in their plan.
It should be.
And I think that's reasonable. On the other hand, the schools usually also do their own, you know, strategic planning and master planning. And so what we usually like to do is kind of cross-reference what, what they're doing, because obviously they go into way more depth and they're the experts on, on that. I'm not a expert in, in school, you know, planning.
No, just, just, I mean, just on the, on the education part, on the schools, if, you know, there's been, that's a big deal. There's, you know, we have aging schools, aging elementary schools, they're in great shape, the, the facilities department keeps them up great. But, you know, this is, this is a future plan. It's, it would be a town decision if we were going to eliminate neighborhood schools. You know, is it the, is it the recommendation of the master plan that we consolidate or that we keep neighborhood schools? I mean, that's what I'm looking for, is recommendations-
I don't know that this plan is going to get you that answer to that specific-
You're not going to make recommendations on things.
-plan answer to that specific question.
Well, no, no, well, it's, I mean, well, you may-
They've invested a lot in strategic planning, like Laura says, I mean, sometimes I think the appropriate thing to do would be to cross-reference the more extensive studies.
Okay, maybe that's a bad example, but that's a town-wide decision.
Right, right.
As is building a new school or whatever. So I mean, that's what I was, all right, I'll give you another example of, of things, like what's the future of Norwood Airport? You know, is, do we want to keep it the way it is? Do we want to utilize it better? Do we want to reduce it? Do we want to, do we, there's land on there, can we use some of that land for other purposes? I mean, I mean, I'm just thinking of real-
Yeah, so we, what rises to the top in this process are, is dependent on what people say is important. And the Norwood Airport has come up in terms of using some, maybe some space for recreation as you are doing now with the playground there, or like trail connectivity or something like that. But other than the actual logistics and management of the airport, hasn't, I haven't-
I'm not talking about that, but I mean, how it relates to the town and what's the town's view of the airport and where does, you know, where do, do they see it? The obvious answer probably in this town would be to leave it alone and leave it, you know, don't do any expansion, if anything, you know, cut back, because, but, you know, I mean, just, but it's got to be in there, it's part of the town, you know?
Sure, yeah.
I mean, there's got to be.
We certainly refer to it in the plan, but I haven't seen any indication that people want any changes at the airport.
So I'm just hoping that there are solid recommendations and not all these bullet-
I hear that, yeah.
All these bullet points that are great, you know, we all want affordable housing, and we all want senior housing, but, you know, well, here's a piece of land, zone it for senior housing, you know, or that's, I want to see concrete stuff.
Yes. So I will say there will be definitely concrete stuff in the plan, but I want to manage expectations that this is still a long-range, ten-year plan that's touching a wide variety of topics. So there is a limit to the level of detail that we're going to, and nuance that we're going to be able to get into. We'll cross-reference other deeper dive plans that you have, and we may unfortunately wind up recommending whatever the logical next step is. And sometimes selecting that logical next step is, hey, you got to do a deep dive plan into this. This has been flagged as an issue and we don't have the information in order to tell you exactly what people want for it, but that would be the next step. So the action item, we'll give you whatever we think the next step should be.
Okay.
So a quick, quick question, are we on budget?
Yes.
And if it's a ten-year plan and we're saying twenty, twenty, thirty-five, we have to complete this by the end of twenty twenty-five?
No, there's not a specific, I mean, we have our timeline, we're going to finish, plan to wrap this up in early twenty twenty-six, like in February or March is our timeline. Yeah, and then you kind of start the process.
February or twenty-six is when you're going to have it.
February or March, yeah, yeah. That's the goal.
Okay.
So when, when we're going to considering how to narrow this list of recommendations, that we're just beginning the process of trying to organize the vetting process right now, so don't worry too much that you haven't seen things yet. There's a number of considerations that someone could bring to how to narrow this down. And it really depends on what you value, right? So are you thinking of the most positive impact to the most people? Are you thinking about the biggest bang for your buck? Are you thinking about, you know, availability of non-local funding sources?
And who's doing that? Is that your committee or is that our committee? Is it town meeting? Is it the selectmen, who's deciding what's the priority there?
Right. I don't know if I have a slide in this, can you slide the-
Well, it'd be the recommendation of the comprehensive committee.
Okay, so, right, so I didn't get into the, so if we go back up a couple, here, I'll talk about this. So we start with our preliminary strategy list. This goes then out to a few different places. We have our public goal survey, which I mentioned just launched, you heard it here today, we're going to further market that. We have road shows, we call them road shows, the boards and committees. So we break these strategy ideas down into our, the best, you know, responsible parties, something that's going to be relevant to that board or committee's responsibilities. And we have them sit down and discuss it in an open meeting and have it on their agenda and have a liaison, a staff member or someone from, who's on our comprehensive plan committee attend that and help lead that discussion and come out with their notes and their ranking as to this is great idea, or this is non-starter, or this is somewhere in the middle and we want to work, wordsmith it or some, we need more information. So that goes out to a whole bunch of boards and committees. Then we also have technical working sessions, we call them, which are invite-only discussions with board or committee members, staff members, knowledgeable people in the public, like it might be a business owner or something like that, who's going to know about the core theme topic at hand. So if it's around economic development, right, we're going to invite members of the business community and the regional business community and the economic development director and people on that committee. So all, and then we have one technical working session per core theme. We take all of those notes, we take their rankings and assessments of the strategies, and we pull it all together and we present it to the comprehensive plans steering committee. At that moment, we try to also get to a final strategy shortlist that we think is the final draft. So we say, here's what, here's where there's consensus, where these strategies are definitely in. Here's where there's consensus, these strategies are definitely out. Here are ones in the middle. So let's figure out together how to make decisions around the ones in the middle. And that's where we need your help as well, because at the end of the day, you are the body that is going to go to adopt the plan. So there can't be any deal breakers in this plan. We might not have consensus around every single thing, but we don't want any deal breakers in it. We want it to make at least, you know, sense to people. And at the strategy shortlist, and you can see it kind of goes up again a little bit, so we're going to bring this final strategy shortlist around a little bit too. We want to make sure, of course, that the department heads and things have a way in on the strategies as well, around feasibility, around capacity. Just because something, they may not have the capacity right now, isn't necessarily a deal breaker, but we want to flag that for consideration and at least have notes on that. All right. So that is kind of where we're, where we're at. And we want to have, you know, your feedback as well, the community preservation, comprehensive plan steering committee is going to bring their recommendations to you also about what they see as in and out of the plan. We'll bring you all that information too of what we heard. And we want to make sure that this, you know, is based on meaningful community engagement and feasibility as well. And I'll just leave you with this, this quote, it brings me back to the beginning where I was saying this is the theme that I'm, I'm seeing and that I've seen a lot in, in communities dealing with a comprehensive plan. But, you know, communities flourish when they find a balance between what they need now and what will sustain them for the future. So that's, that's our aim with you.
Okay, thank you. Board, do we have any questions? Anybody? Your question?
I asked mine.
Bernie?
I asked mine. I just, I just want to see, you know, I don't, I don't like the fluffy words, I want to see recommendations. This is what we want to, we as a town want to look like in ten years or going forward. That's all.
Right, and I think my concern was, when we started this, was we had a master plan floating around Town Hall somewhere that nobody could find. You can have all the great ideas in the world, if they don't get implemented, we've just wasted a lot of money. And I would like to see it be a little clearer, because I'm confused. It's a little nebulous for me. And I understand that's the process, but in order to get people engaged and get them to talk about it, I think we have to ask a question that's not nebulous. You know, let's, like, I gave it all the words, let's ask a specific question and try to get, I mean, I thought it would have helped to pass out some of the other towns' master plans and say, here it is. We're not going to do that one, we're not going to cut and paste, but here's what we're trying to get to. I don't know that I could get to Walpole if I didn't know I was going to Walpole. You know what I mean? You can't get there unless you know where you're going. So that's, that's all I got to say. Anybody else?
If you don't know where you're going, any road will get you.
You can't get there.
And if you don't know where you're going, any road will take you there. Go on, Dylan.
Yeah, but he was stoned. Okay, anybody else? We're good?
I think this last, this next phase will speak to a lot of what I'm hearing from you all, right? Like, I think that this Phase Three and getting into Phase Four is some of the most exciting work of the plan, because to your point, it's like where we actually start talking about the fun stuff, right? Is they- Is the actual ideas, and I, I do think that that's what people can connect to and relate to. So I'm excited to see what our engagement looks like in this next stage, because I think when people are looking, you know, at our road shows, and the boards of committees, and the surveys, they're actually looking at these ideas, I think they'll be able to connect a little bit better.
Right, because the people that I've talked to about it.
Yeah.
Are lost. They don't know where, where the road is taking, they don't know where they're going with it, so they don't know what questions to ask.
But that's also why we're breaking up the engagement by phase, in fairness too, right? Like, you're, you're receiving this presentation about the themes, and the goals, and now the strategies. The engagement, you know, Laura and her team really wisely broke it up by phase, so instead of just having one survey on the whole comp plan, which is totally overwhelming, right? Like, there was a survey specifically on, you know, general goals, you know, we've done engagement on topical outreach, so we're really kind of breaking it up so that people have different opportunities to get involved, but also maybe different options and ways to get involved that like inspire and excite them the most, that they can connect with and identify with the most. And hopefully, by doing that, we'll get the most participation from the most people across a broader representation of the situation.
We kind of flew past the slide, but there was a slide on there that touched on all these different ways we engage, for example, throughout Phase Two. And so we wanna make it easy on people to try to meet them where they are, and have longer-form paper things for people who like that, and shorter-form online things for people who like that. And we can't give you the right specific actions if we don't have a clear idea of what people want. We really need to take some time in that phase to really listen, and so we've been listening for a long time, and now we're ready to kind of, okay, I think we have a much clearer picture of what to focus on.
Okay.
And we'll ask even more what to focus on, because we're asking people to help prioritize right now too, and we wanna highlight that in the final plan. And so now we're ready to really kind of drill, drill into the weeds.
Ernie's got another question?
Well, just on, you know, I was involved in several open space and recreation plans, and we've done housing plans in the past, you know, sub-categorized, you know, plans, and on the open, you know, the open space and rec one was always, and I'm assuming this is gonna be similar to that, where you would have the general question regarding open space in one of your six core, core things, I'm a jig is up there, and, and then you would ask within that open space, you know, is the, is, do we have enough open space? Do we have enough walking trails? Which the Trails Committee is, you know, we didn't have any until the Trails Committee was, you know, got involved. You know, do we, do we still, we, we just did, you know, one pool, is there still an appetite for an indoor pool? Is there, is there an appetite for, you know, something, you know, something else, or to do with, you know, recreation, or, you know, a different gym, or, you know, you know, whatever? And then, you know, people would vote on it, say, I, you know, out of these five items, you know, I really want a dog park, or I really want an indoor pool, or I, you know, my first out of these five items, if I had to pick one, and I had one vote, it would be for this one, you know? And then they gathered all that information, I think we, there was something online, what was it called? Cue Answer Guy, it was an online, what's it called? Master Q or something, or is ya a rapper? There was a, you, you could go online, they, they tabulated everything for you. They, they set up the whole thing. And what's it called? I don't know.
There's so many different engagement.
Yeah, and, and they tabulated all these answers and everything, and then you, then the plan came out, and it said that, you know, 82% of people that answered this question wanted a dog park, over, an indoor pool, over a new baseball field, or, you know what I mean? And then, I'm hoping it kind of has that idea.
Yeah, my, my concern is, we did a Vanderbilt plan, 10 years ago? Is it 10 years ago?
More, more.
And we hired a consultant, and we, now it's private property, so, but we had this big plan, and we spent a lot of time on it, and we spent a good amount of money on it. Where in the hell is it?
We got, we got a sign out of it, that was it.
Laura has all, all of those plans, and they've incorporated a lot of those feedbacks into the comp plan.
I've, I've got it. I've put those ideas in, into this plan, the ones that are still relevant, and kind of, from making it through.
Okay, okay, here's a question. So you've read it, and we're gonna have all these ideas, are you gonna say, I would maybe recommend that this is the planning department, this is a selectman, this is building in whatever? So somebody can actually take this process and do something with it?
Yes, yes. We're actually doing that probably this week or next week. Because in order to do the road shows, we have to flag a key responsible party. And at the end of it, we will have an implementation matrix, which you'll have the pretty, you'll have the pretty plan, as I call it, the, the kind of the nicely laid-out one that goes into the whole process, and lays out all the goals and strategies and visioning and everything like that, it's very publicly accessible, very readable. And then you'll also have the, the spreadsheet, right? The who's gonna own the spreadsheet? And with all of the action items on there, who's doing it? Is it short, medium, long term? What are resources? What are funding resources? What are case studies? You know, things that are gonna help you take it and implement it at the end. Before we leave, we wanna make sure that you know what systems you're gonna have in place in order to implement the plan moving forward. So you wanna know, you wanna have some measurable metrics for you all. We wanna have the, the spreadsheet, we wanna have you to have whatever the implementation committee or something like that looks like for you after this process, so that someone is gonna continue to kind of worry about it.
Be responsible for what you suggested, and we spent all this money to get.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody good?
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the engagement ideas too.
Okay, that's about it, except our minutes.
That's right.
Quick question, Sarah.
Yes?
I asked our, our lovely secretary today, we're, we're gonna approve four, four weeks minutes.
Yes.
Are all the rest of them on the website?
Everything that you've ever approved is on the website. These are not on the website, because you haven't approved them yet. If you approve them, they'll be uploaded tomorrow.
Okay, so everything before June 2nd is on, currently on the website?
Yes.
So we've got June 2nd, June 30th, June 14th, or July 14th, and July 28th. Once we approve these, they're gonna be put on the website.
Right.
Not for me, because I don't go on the website, but some people like the website. Okay, so I can answer that question when people call. You see the website? No, I don't go to the website. I carry around my little pieces of paper.
Somebody wants them, and they're not on, if they're not able to access the website, they can call or stop by, we can print them out, we can give them to people, we could find other ways to.
Come to my office and go through the file cabinets and take some of this paper off my hands.
Or they're, or they're eight-four, Monday.
Do we wanna do them one at a time, or do you wanna put the dates and vote on them?
You can do them all at once.
Okay, so we're gonna vote on the approval of minutes for June 2nd. You have?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
All right, wait, let me write that.
Oh, you're gonna do the date? I'll do it.
All right, you do the date.
So, Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve the minutes from June 2nd, 2025, June 30th, 2025, July 14th, 2025, and July 28th, 2025.
You made that motion. Anybody have a second? I can't do it.
Second.
All in favor of approving four weeks' worth of minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, that is in on our agenda, except, Ernie?
Madam Chairman, September 22nd, I will be off the grid. I will not be here, and I won't be able to zoom in. I will be up in the northern part of great state of Maine.
Nope, not killing any animals or cutting down any trees, right?
Well, if they deserve it.
I'd like to do a pitch for Norwood the movie, Saturday night, it was great.
It was great.
It was great.
Jerry did a great job, Jerry and.
It was great, did you see it?
So, has anybody, speaking of movies, have, have you seen the Lem Nielsen's Abdication movie?
No.
When that was filmed at the mansion?
Just part of it, yeah, a couple scenes.
It was?
Yeah. The, the working title of it was called Thug.
No, I have not seen it.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adios.